Good evening. We have a couple of readings on consideration of changes. If you are here, if you can just please silence your cellphones. And there is a sign-in sheet. If you can sign your name to that, we would very much appreciate it. So I will hand it over to you for the second readings on those.
Our first item is a proposed amendment to the animal ordinance. We've already held the public hearing on this item. No material changes have been presented from the first reading to the second reading. Generally speaking, we propose removing Toccoa Police Department from the language in the animal control ordinance with the ability to issue citations in the unincorporated area of Stevens County.
Thank you.
The second is a proposed changes to the buildings and building regulations ordinance. There has been one material change presented from the first reading to the second reading, and that was at the request of Commissioner Wright to clarify the dates in which a vacation permit will be issued. And those dates are now clarified in the ordinance to read from May 1st through September 30th, the beginning of the month of May to the end of the month of September. That is the only material change presented from the first reading to the second reading. And then finally is proposed changes to the manufactured homes and trailers ordinance. There were no material changes presented from the first reading to the second reading. Generally speaking, we will be removing this language from the camper permit and, excuse me, we will be removing this language regarding camper permits from the manufactured homes and trailers ordinance and moving it to the building and buildings regulations ordinance. Are there any questions? Thank you.
All right. We have five items under the land use public hearing.
All right. We'll now begin the land use public hearing portion of the meeting. We have five items on tonight's agenda. We will call each item in turn. First, we will call for those wishing to speak in favor of each proposed item. For those wishing to speak in favor, we ask that you come up to the microphone and give your name and address for the record, and then you will have up to 10 minutes to speak. There will be a timer on the screen, and we ask that you try to keep your comments under that 10-minute limit. Following from anyone wishing to speak in favor of each proposed item, we will then call for those wishing to speak in opposition to each item. The same rules will apply. We ask that you give your name and address for the record, come up to the microphone, and you will also have up to 10 minutes to speak. Following from that, at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners, a three-minute rebuttal can be provided for any land use item for the property owner or applicant in question. Are there any questions or comments about how this public hearing will commence this evening? Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and begin. Item number one is a variance request from Tony Keller at 353 Oakway Drive, Toccoa, parcel 044193. The property is currently zoned as residential single, and the proposed action to be taken is to grant a variance to allow for an accessory structure within the front yard. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item?
Yes, sir. Jay Dos, I'm sorry. Jay Dos with McClure, Ramsey, and Dickerson. I assisted Mr. Keller in preparing his variance application, and I don't want to spend a lot of y'all's time. I'm mainly here to answer any questions y'all may have, but I would like to restate what I put in my kind of introductory letter, that this property is completely surrounded by woods. It's not visible from the road. It's not visible from any neighboring properties. And he also made an honest mistake. He poured the concrete slab, realized that he was going to be out of regulation, so he immediately stopped and asked for me to help. So I will just ask that y'all grant this variance, and I'll answer any questions that y'all have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Dos. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The land use public hearing for item number one is closed. Item number two is a rezoning request from James Bruce III at 34 Buena Vista Drive, East Nali, parcel 044005. The property is currently zoned as agricultural residential, and the proposed action to be taken is to rezone 0.066 acres from agricultural residential to residential single for property combination purposes. The recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The land use public hearing for item number two is closed. Item number three and four, we'll take those together if that's okay?
Please.
All right. These are from Kelly Subetti, 192 Richardson Street, Toccoa, parcel 032A122. The property is currently zoned as residential single. There are two proposed actions to be taken. The first is to grant a variance to allow for an accessory structure within the front yard and to grant a variance to allow for a reduction in the side yard setback. The second is to grant a conditional use permit to allow for a home-based business. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve the conditional use request and to deny the variance request. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Yes, ma'am.
Don't be nervous.
You're fine.
I'm Kelly Subetti, and I'm the one that asked for that. I also made up a PowerPoint, but I could not get it to print, so I have it. I can email it.
We could try. We could try.
If you want to do it real quick.
Email it to me.
So for clarification, it is already there. I just wanted to...
So when I bought the house, April was driveway, and it used to be a car park. We put rocks all the way from the street to the end of my house, all the way down this side and all the way in the garden. So it made it rock there, but it originally was only like...
So you got rock in between your existing driveway and the privacy fence that's in this packet?
Yes. From the privacy fence to the other fence is now rock. The building is over rock, which was like, we made it kind of like into a two... kind of like, but the building, so on the right side of the house, and in the pictures you can see it more clear, like you can't, there's not enough room to put the building between my privacy fence and my house. It's only as wide as the building itself, and you have to have so many feet.
That's on the right side of the house, right? If you're facing it from the street.
Yes, when you're looking from the street. On the left side, my fence comes from my house. On the right side, comes down to the street, all the way over my property, all the way up, and then back over to my house. It's 244 feet of fence. We moved from 44 square feet-ish. That's just us doing it with the tape measure trying to do. But in order, and that fence has been there like forever. Like, there's two trees like this big that are growing through the fence, like this would be the fence and the tree in the front. And then on the side, there's probably 15 small trees growing in it. And then in the back, where they're wanting me to put it behind that fence, there's a big azalea there. So like you're talking about, it's a lot. It would be a lot to do.
So is the building currently hooked up to water and power?
Power, yes. Water, no. I have somebody who's supposed to be coming to do the water, because my... What happened is when I owned a business, Ivy League Boarding and Grooming off of Currie, right there on Currie and Almond Street, and I was there for a year. And then after a year, the air conditioner went out, and it was going to be another $5,000 of expenses, and I already wasn't making enough to pay the bills there because it was like almost $5,000 a month just in overhead. So I couldn't afford to stay there. So I made the decision to get out of my lease agreement to purchase that land, and I originally was just going to stop and try to find somewhere else to rent, but then I was like, what am I going to do with all my stuff? Like, my house is only 900 and something square feet, so it's not very big. And I was like, I paid $1,000 for my tub. I have a Dalmatian and a standard poodle along with other little dogs, but like those are my two that like would be hard for me to bathe in my house. So I was like, I don't want to lose my tub for $1,000 that I paid. I don't want to lose all my stuff. What am I going to do with it? And so a friend of mine was like, why don't you get one of those storage buildings, and you can just put all your stuff in there for your dogs? And I was like, that's a great idea. Like, I'm going to do that. So that's how I originally came up with that idea to get that. And then when I had the people come out to tell me about where I could put the building, that's what he said. But I also remembered, when I first bought the property, we had somebody come from Habersham, and they told me the same thing. They said you would either have to remove the fence to go this way, but there's no way to go on that side because there's not enough room, or you'd have to build it in the backyard. But back to the, so when I...
So is there room if you push the building back to where it's just adjacent to your house on that right side, between your house and that privacy fence?
It won't fit. You can't put it there.
Won't fit?
Mm-mm. Let me try to...
I've got...
Let me try to...
You've got the street view? Yeah, I haven't seen the street view.
So this is the driveway?
Sorry. He's just got a street view.
Yeah, I pulled it up on Google Maps to get street view so that we can...
Okay. So there's not enough room with that refinished carport to just slide it back?
Do you have that on your PowerPoint?
Even with the street.
Okay. Let's see if we can get that through.
This is a city parcel that's still on... This is the Richardson Street city, but it's one of those things where, back in the day when they did their zoning, it's like every other house, city, county, city, county. And that's another story.
Understood. Sorry. I was just trying to get information. My bad.
Let's see if we can get the PowerPoint up. I think that would probably help us.
I'm correct about that, right? Ms. Kelly, that you're on in-city limits?
No, I'm in the county.
It's just the county part. Richardson Street's not a city?
I'm county.
Portions of the house or properties are in the city. The majority is in the county.
Portions are in the city, portions are in the county, but it's within the city, I believe. She's just not paying city taxes. You've got neighbors that are city residents on the, I believe, on the same street, not to get off and...
I thought I was county because of you.
No, you're at the right place to figure this out, but there's quite a few areas down 106 and other areas where parcels are county and city on the same street. Correct? Christian, I don't want to misspeak.
The only ones are...
But there are some. That's my point.
There's like two.
Yeah.
So these pictures that are in the packet, are they of the existing structure now, or is this from your earlier business?
That's my existing structure now. That was when I first did it. It's a little...
No, I was just curious. I mean...
Yeah, I'm curious, because I'm seeing different pictures, and I'm trying to figure out what's what. I see a brick house.
The brick house is my house.
I see a white house.
A white house?
I think that's the next...
I see another house with...
Those are just the surrounding property owners?
I think those are the adjoining properties that are adjacent to her property.
Oh, in the packet, they made me give you, they made me give everybody whose property touches my property. So that would be those houses. Those are not mine.
I got you.
Which one's your house then? The very first one.
I'm the brick house, 192 Richardson Street. It's a brick house.
This one.
I sent it. I don't know if you...
Yeah. That's the same house?
Yeah. That's her. Yeah.
So there's a building there now?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is the building? I don't see the building in the picture.
I think if she can get the PowerPoint sent, it's going to help us.
Debbie, go to the page with the diagram.
Why don't she just bring her phone around here and let us look at it?
Miss Debbie.
I'm... Keep going. I did look. Did I miss it?
It's extensive. I mean, it's not...
Is that?
Ma'am, I think it's back.
It's drawn. That.
Oh, this. I saw that.
Yes, ma'am. That's the questions I was asking about, would this building slide back here? But it won't fit.
Yeah, and you can see it.
Because if you could get it level with the street, I wouldn't be asking.
It's not going to go.
It's very close to the street in the Google view.
Well, you can't even hardly, you can't go fast down Richardson Street anyway.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I'm not saying that. I've just said that's the questions I was asking.
Have you ever been down there? Have you ever hung out down there? You know that area? I bet you don't.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Yeah, there's no way you could get it. Yeah, you couldn't get it by. All right. Somebody bring the phone to Debbie.
I was just trying to get clarification.
Not too big.
All right.
From the Planning Commission's team.
Anybody else have...
I don't have any additional questions. I just wanted to make sure I had clarification on the information that was in the packet. I'm good.
I'm sorry. It's not coming through. I haven't seen it yet.
I saw it.
Debbie, you got any other questions?
Um, I will say one more thing. I did call because last time he was talking about different things, and he said like have the fence cut, blah, 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 in the other meeting. I did call fence companies, and in order to have the building moved to the back, it would cost a minimum if they cut my fence in the two places, and this is not tree people. I'd have to have tree people come and cut limbs first because the... There's three big trees that would have to have limbs removed in order to get the building underneath them to go back. But, so first, I'd have to have a tree company come and cut down limbs. So that would be that expense, which I don't know what that would cost. But then the fence company, if they cut my fence and just replace that section, it would be a minimum of $1,500. If they replace the whole fence, it's $6,000 up. So it's not like a cheap thing to do, and you've got to remember like I'm broke because I just spent my whole retirement and savings on the business for the past year. So just keep that in mind, please. So. Questions for me?
Thank you.
I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Yes, ma'am. If you'll come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, ma'am. I'm in. That's where her house is. Out and out.
Dogs. Yes, ma'am. I have some dogs.
I think all of us do.
At the Planning Commission? Well, I appreciate that, but no, ma'am. I wouldn't at the Planning Commission.
You got a little dog there.
I don't. My wife and children do.
He does. He's right.
I married it worse.
In the bigger building, that just cost a fortune. Second mama. So one of them, the last time we had the first meeting, we need this. Nobody here. Now she does ours. But it's just, if you could see it.
I think we've got a pretty good idea. Yes, ma'am.
That's what I was thinking, because I'm very familiar with Richardson Street.
Can you just state your name and address for the record so we can get it on there?
Gregory, 52 Richardson.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. We appreciate that.
Something to be proud of.
I think I need a mic, but I'll say this. We've, like I said, been there, you know, going on five years now. Y'all remember five years ago, it was...
Exactly. I'm familiar.
Yeah. And we worked hard. We've been pastors all our life. I worked hard. People she had cleaned up a lot. Hundred percent it cleaned up a lot. We got good neighbors on Richardson Street now. She was our neighbor. She's the one, the first one that greeted us. Everybody that talked to us around there when we came in said, we needed y'all here. I've run drug dealers off, don't walk in down the street with backpacks. By neighborhood. Yeah, I got a dog. Porky. Got another now. People who love their animals, somebody they can trust, and she's done, worked hard to try to make that look beautiful. All relative, you know, to...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Yes, ma'am. If you'll come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, ma'am. I'm in.
That's where her house is. Out and out.
Dogs. Yes, ma'am. I have some dogs.
I think all of us do.
At the Planning Commission? Well, I appreciate that, but no, ma'am. I wouldn't at the Planning Commission.
You got a little dog there.
I don't. My wife and children do.
He does. He's right.
I married it worse. In the bigger building, that just cost a fortune. Second mama. So one of them, the last time we had the first meeting, we need this. Nobody here. Now she does ours. But it's just, if you could see it.
I think we've got a pretty good idea. Yes, ma'am.
That's what I was thinking, because I'm very familiar with Richardson Street.
Can you just state your name and address for the record so we can get it on there?
Gregory, 52 Richardson.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. We appreciate that.
Fifty-five years, so...
Something to be proud of.
I think I need a mic, but I'll say this. We've, like I said, been there, you know, going on five years now. Y'all remember five years ago, it was...
Exactly. I'm familiar.
Yeah. And we worked hard. We've been pastors all our life. I worked hard. People she had cleaned up a lot. Hundred percent it cleaned up a lot. We got good neighbors on Richardson Street now. She was our neighbor. She's the one, the first one that greeted us. Everybody that talked to us around there when we came in said, we needed y'all here. I've run drug dealers off, don't walk in down the street with backpacks. By neighborhood. Yeah, I got a dog. Porky. Got another now. People who love their animals, somebody they can trust, and she's done, worked hard to try to make that look beautiful. All relative, you know, to...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Yes, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Wiley Helm. I live at 139 Glencrest Drive, and I am a client of Kelly's, and I just wanted to come out and support her. I'm a millennial, so I find my businesses through Google searches and reviews, and if you Google boarding in Stevens County, Georgia, nothing pops up except for Ivy League grooming. And if you look at the reviews, which I always look at before I use a business, she's got 37 five-star reviews. You're not going to find better service, and we're blessed to have her in Stevens County, and we need her business because there's nowhere else I can take my dogs. I have to go all the way to Clarksville, which is a minimum 30-minute drive one way, so it's an hour-round trip. And if I'm traveling, I want to go out of town, and I need somebody to watch my dogs, that's an hour of headache I've got to add to my family planning. Earlier this summer, we were blessed, and we were able to go to Scotland for my wife's, it was her push present for my daughter. But I had to leave my dogs for nine days, and my option was Clarksville Vet, and there's, their kennels are very small. Nothing against Clarksville Vet, they're great people, but their kennels are very small, and the people that were running the kennel, they said they take them out, you know, once, maybe 10 minutes a day. So for nine days, I would have to subject my dogs to a small kennel with only 10 to 30-minute breaks each day, and that's just not good living conditions. With Kelly and Ivy League grooming, I knew that she was constantly taking them out. She had a whole play area set up. She was pouring love into them the whole time, and that's the business I'm looking for when I want somebody to board my dogs. I want to know they're going to be happy when I get back and not, you know, exasperated and anxious and separation anxiety and creating all these, you know, psychological issues for them because they've been caged up for that long. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of her. Her service is amazing, and I just hope that this gets pushed through.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The land use public hearing for items number three and four are closed.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five is a rezoning request from Brittany Stowers, 4373 Oak Valley Road, Toccoa, parcel 050071. The property is currently zoned as agricultural residential, and the proposed action to be taken is to rezone to residential single for residential development purposes. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? All right. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? All right. The land use public hearing for items number three and four are closed.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five is a rezoning request from Brittany Stowers, 4373 Oak Valley Road, Toccoa, parcel 050071. The property is currently zoned as agricultural residential, and the proposed action to be taken is to rezone to residential single for residential development purposes. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? All right. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? All right. The land use public hearing for item number five is closed.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five is a rezoning request from Brittany Stowers, 4373 Oak Valley Road, Toccoa, parcel 050071. The property is currently zoned as agricultural residential, and the proposed action to be taken is to rezone to residential single for residential development purposes. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? All right. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? All right. The land use public hearing for item number five is closed.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five is a rezoning request from Brittany Stowers, 4373 Oak Valley Road, Toccoa, parcel 050071. The property is currently zoned as agricultural residential, and the proposed action to be taken is to rezone to residential single for residential development purposes. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? All right. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? We appreciate that. Something to be proud of.
I think I need a mic, but I'll, I'll say this. We, we, like I said, we've been there, you know, going on five years now. Y'all remember five years ago? It was-
Exactly. I'm familiar.
And we worked hard. We've been pastors all our life. I worked hard, the people she had. Cleaned up a lot. Hundred percent, it cleaned up a lot. We got good neighbors on Richardson Street now. She was our neighbor. She's the one, first one that greeted us. Everybody that talked to us around there when we came in said, we needed y'all here. I've run drug dealers off. Don't walk in down the street with pack, backpacks. By neighborhood. Yeah, I got a dog. Got another now. But people who love their animals. Somebody they can trust. And she's done, worked hard to try to make that look beautiful. Roll, roll it to, you know, to-
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Yes, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Wiley Helm. I live at 139 Glencrest Drive. And I am a client of Kelly's. And I just wanted to come out and support her. I'm a millennial, so I find my businesses through Google searches and reviews. And if you Google boarding in Stevens County, Georgia, nothing pops up except for Ivy League grooming. And if you look at the reviews, which I always look at before I use a business, she's got 37 five-star reviews. You're not gonna find better service. And we're blessed to have her in Stevens County. And we need her business because there's nowhere else I can take my dogs. I have to go all the way to Clarksville, which is a minimum 30-minute drive one way, so it's an hour round trip. And if I'm traveling, I want to go out of town and I need somebody to watch my dogs, that's an hour of headache I've gotta add to my family planning. Earlier this summer, we were blessed and we were able to go to Scotland for my wife's, it was her push present for my daughter. But I had to leave my dogs for nine days. And my option was Clarksville Vet. And there's, their kennels are very small. Uh, nothing against Clarksville Vet, they're great people. But their kennels are very small. And the people that were running the kennel, they said they'd take them out, you know, once maybe 10 minutes a day. So for nine days, I would have to subject my dogs to a small kennel with only 10 to 30-minute breaks each day. And that's just not good living conditions. With Kelly and Ivy League grooming, I knew that she was constantly taking them out. She had a whole play area set up. She was pouring love into them the whole time. And that's the business I'm looking for when I want somebody to board my dogs. I want to know they're gonna be happy when I get back and not, you know, exasperated and anxious and separation anxiety and creating all these, you know, psychological issues for them because they've been caged up for that long. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of her. Her service is amazing and I just hope that this gets pushed, uh, pushed through. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The Land Use Public Hearing for Items Number Three and Four are closed.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five is a rezoning request from Brittany Stowers, 4373 Oak Valley Road, Toccoa, Parcel 050071. The property is currently zoned as agricultural residential. And the proposed action to be taken is to rezone to residential single for residential development purposes. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve as requested. Any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? All right. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor?
I did want to say, I'm, I'm very familiar with that area. And, um, makes me happy to see, you know, we've got some good people in there, good neighbors, and that there's been improvement there. And I think that's the big deal.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The Land Use Public Hearing for Item Number Five is closed.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of the Land Use Public Hearing items. Um, we will start our regular meeting with Mr. Teasley. Uh, and if everybody can stand and join us in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd appreciate it. That's what he was in the middle of.
Let's bow. Dear God, we come at that in the name of Jesus Christ. We thank you, Father God, for everything you do for us. Thank you for allowing us to have such a county, a city to live in. Dear God, we just thank you so very much. We ask now, Lord, that you bless this Board of Com- uh, Commissioners and give them wisdom and give them understanding to do the business of this county. We pray that you not only bless them, but bless the staff, dear God, and bless the workers, Father God. And we ask that you bless the citizens that's here tonight, dear God. And we just ask each and every one of these blessings in your Son, Jesus Christ's name. And we be careful, dear God, that you get the praise, you get the honor, and you get every bit of the glory. For it's in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christian, I do apologize. I didn't know you'd moved on to number five. I thought we were still on-
She said, what about number five? I said, that's what you were talking.
Duh. Thank you, Mr. Teasley. All right, um, I think we have an addition to the agenda this evening, two. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we would like to add item number 10, Board to Consider Motion to Present Slate of Candidates for 2025 Stevens County Hospital Authority Open Positions. And then item number 11, Board to Consider Motion to Dispose of Surplus Real Property Located at 194 East Silver Shoals Road, Accept Auction Bid of $501 by Brandon Mitchell and Authorize Chairman to Sign Resolution.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Items 10 and 11 as stated by Mrs. Turner?
Motion to approve is stated. Will the additions mention?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Do you have a motion to approve the minutes from September 9th, 2025?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. That brings us to new business.
Item number one of new business, Board to Consider Motion to Adopt Changes to the Stevens County Animal Ordinance and Authorize Chairman to Sign Resolution.
Motion to approve line item one on the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion by the board? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item number two, Board to Consider Motion to Adopt Changes to the Buildings and Building Regulations Ordinance and Authorize Chairman to Sign Resolution.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion by the board? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item number three, Board to Consider Motion to Adopt Changes to the Manufactured Homes and Trailers Ordinance and Authorize Chairman to Sign Resolution.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Three.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, Board to Consider Motion to Approve or Deny Variance Request from Tony Keller as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve the variance request by Mr. Keller.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item number five, Board to Consider Motion to Approve or Deny Rezoning Request from James Bruce as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve, uh, the rezoning request by Mr. Bruce on line item five.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item number six, um, six and seven, do you want to take them together?
Let's do them separately.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Item number six, Board to Consider Motion to Approve or Deny Variance Request from Kelly Sue Betty as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
My, I do. I would just like to say, my concern is not with the business or any of the services you provide. My concern is from a public safety aspect of having, when we look at the setbacks and the purpose of those setbacks, fire and EMS is, is in there. My concern with this particular scenario is you have almost no difference, when you put that building there with no setback from the property line, you now have a house, an accessory structure, and another house in extremely close proximity. And so that increases the chances of rapid fire spread between those three structures. In addition to just getting a fire attack line into your structure to protect you and those animals. That is my concern with that is, there's obviously a need for that service. I think it, it speaks very highly of that. However, my concern is not just your structure, but the surrounding properties and how fast that fire spreads. We are under a volunteer fire service, which increases the response time. We have great firefighters here in this county. But unfortunately, the response time is extended. And that is, um, my hesitancy with that.
Not at this point. I'm sorry.
So I'm, I'm aligned with, with Craig on, um, the statement that he just made so that you don't hear the same statement again. Um, I know when we get to the next line item for you guys, I'm gonna be in approval of that. And I'll say privately or after this meeting, I don't know how this is gonna go as far as voting for this, um, this line item here. But if it goes in failure, I'd like to talk with you guys to help you with some expenses to help you move the structure. Because I do believe we need the business. And I'm thankful for each person that spoke in favor of it. But I'm really just completely aligned with Craig's statement. But I'd like to help you outside of this meeting with some of those expenses. And we can talk later about that if it gets denied. I don't know how it's, haven't talked to the other commissioners. I don't know how it's gonna go yet, but we'll, we'll find out.
Clear. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes.
Okay. Item number seven, Board to Consider Motion to Approve or Deny Conditional Use Request from Kelly Sue Betty.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Item number eight, Board to Consider Motion to Approve or Deny Rezoning Request from Brittany Stowers as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number Nine, Eight, sorry.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion by the board? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item number nine, Board to Consider Motion to Adopt Updated Permit Fee Schedule and Authorize Chairman to Sign Resolution. Several minor changes are being added to the permit fee schedule. We're adding in the camper permits that you just approved. Um, we're also adding in CO inspection fees. These are fees that we've charged, but they haven't been on the one-stop shop fee schedule documentation. Um, and then we're adding in tower permit fees. These fees are already located in the ordinance. However, we wanted to go ahead and include them in the, um, in the fee schedule as well. Um, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Oh, excuse me, sorry.
Okay.
Board of One, thank you.
Item number 10, Board to Consider Motion to Present Slate of Candidates for 2025 Stevens County Hospital Authority Open Positions.
So two terms are set to expire that are Stan Roberts and Rick Phillips. Mr. Roberts has asked not to be reappointed and Mr. Phillips is requesting that the hospital authority consider him for reappointment to the position. According to state law, we are required to provide six names, three for each open position. The following slate of candidates is being proposed. For Mr. Roberts' vacancy, we are proposing Cassandra Wilkins, Sherry Beavers, and Josh Rickman. For Mr. Phillips' seat, we are proposing Rick Phillips, Lori McAvoy, and Melissa Mitchell. The slate of candidates will be sent to the hospital authority for final consideration. Are there any further action by the board?
Well, we'll just need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve the six selected candidates for the two positions on the hospital board.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. That motion carries.
Okay, I'll get a letter out to the CEO tomorrow.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to number 11, and you're gonna have to say that.
Yeah, no problem. Item number 11, Board to Consider Motion to Dispose of Surplus Real Property Located at 194 East Silver Shoals Road and Accept Auction Bid of $501 by Brandon Mitchell and Authorize Chairman to Sign Resolution. You'll recall that at a previous meeting in the Board of Commissioners, you opted to dispose of this property via auction. That auction was held this past Friday, the 19th, at 4:00 PM. And one bidder, um, provided a bid for the auction. He met the minimum bid by a dollar, um, which is, which is great. So, um, we're, we're ready to move forward with the, um, with the approval pending a resolution.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number 11.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'm glad we had a bidder. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We've got two invoices in quotes over $10,000.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the first is from Greenville Trim Light and the amount of $21,132.50. Um, this is for lighting on the historic courthouse. And the second is for, uh, central Atlanta tractor sales